I was wondering if we could hear about the and uh she falls online, so I'm sure she's gonna
Did they ask you uh give us our feedback?
I would assume that's what they did when she signed for it. I don't know what's we asked. It's gone post.
Yes, it is.
Well, yeah, I don't see next meeting is what the twenty third?
Yep.
The ninth is the uh that's sitting here on the front here. Yeah, I was wondering, we should do it, we had my itinerary for that, I mean, it was all
I put it together.
Do you want to get a thing in the mail this week and announce what celebrity
Anyway.
No, he started like a like a
And we've got a program that's on a week to see
Yeah.
We're still waiting for him to come here.
Okay. It won't be ready for next week, I mean, the two weeks, our
Twelve, right?
Yeah.
No, I think
Okay.
Well, it might be ready by the twenty third.
From you.
That should be. You need to nail it down.
Do we not throw that on the agenda for the twenty third, so we just make sure we're all on the same page?
Yep.
But it didn't miss something.
Just to review the
Yeah. Cause
Even even as the draft.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
It's something we're gonna pass out with you, but
Right. But I mean, it just for our purpose, so we know where we're supposed to be standing here, like put an X on the ground or something. Like fall down.
Hopefully, good sound system.
Okay, we'll take that to school.
Like I said, I hope we have good sound system.
Yeah.
I think your chief must have a P A system on his cruiser, right?
Get an old bullhorn.
Bullhorn?
Yeah, but it gets the D sounds of foot thrower.
There you go.
I'm good with that, I'll supply the D cells for you, that'd be fine.
D cells, right?
Cause that way, all they're gonna do is scare me, they won't have to see me, cause it would just be the horn.
They're the horn.
Yeah. Perfect picture opportunity.
Yeah.
Uh, next on the agenda, we used to go hand in hand, we got an email from uh Jay Whitelaw from the children's community group there. And also, we got a decision from the Board of Tax and Land Appeals. Um, basically, in layman's terms, we won. Except for a few uh, a few different uh towns, I think, for um to go to the end, it has the actual conclusions here somewhere included. Um, the board finds merit in many of the municipal's arguments regarding why the taxpayer did not meet its burden, basically, public service and another one right here. Didn't meet their burden of proof. Um, so, in brief, the board finds these appraisals fail to establish taxpayers entitled to tax payments. Uh, however, based on appraisal and other evidence presented by municipal's themselves, the board grants um Landau, Nelson, Stard, and Wilmont, two thousand and eleven appeals. And the Bath, Landau, uh Landau, Nelson, Mylan, Nelson, and Randolph, two thousand twelve appeals. I guess they were really overcharged enough. So, I guess they had, those the only towns that really um have to give any payment, everybody else were right on target.
So, they don't owe us, we don't owe them, they'll
Well, they don't owe us if they haven't paid the taxes yet.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. That's the actual decision. Came to us, and his email, it kind of just oversees it, it tells you what's going on. I was gonna have, where it came to the chair of the selectmen, I was gonna ask lean to make a copy for the board of assessors, so they have one for their files.
Yep.
I'm sure they already know about it and everything, but still, we have official
Maybe
Yeah, sense of He's on the uh, the actual decision here, she got a copy. I'll throw that back in my work here. So, that's a good time. Now, they have the opportunity to uh pass a reconsideration, and after that, they can appeal to the Supreme Court. But according to the email here from Mitchell, they're, it's all, we need to look at their They feel that the board of land tax appeals did a really thorough job and saw the decision that chances are, they're not gonna reconsider, and if it goes to the Supreme Court, that the uh public utilities probably will not prevail. Still fall where it is. So Well, they appeal on the other one, but they have thirty days. Well, that's good. Also, I'm gonna send a couple of What we have left is the uh RFP and the uh school more. Right? Um, we have a game where we look Um, people are close on uh, crashing, slipping, and falling issue. Uh, getting each other to um team J this week, or even last week, we can play it, so I've spoken to Julia for a couple times, but Tim, Julie, and I, we've got the team J, the crash hall.
Oh, okay.
And um, but Tim, my, and I, it's not That's organs, well, I mean, I said, who's the chief of it? Still has contracts, the crash hall, it's obviously, uh, there's
No, that's in the work.
But uh
Yeah, guys trying to keep it local, but
Yeah, guys not done part, and he's off. Well, it's on the gloss, and I'm looking at it, it went right by my house, it went to the, right down the road.
Yeah, it could be the reason why I forget. Forget the schedule. Anyway, so it's something we need to nail down. Other than that, I think we're pretty good. Um, I do need to um, I did hear from Deb Foster, I want to do something, you know, but I checked it today, eleven white, so I have to go in and finish updating that document, making the changes we talked about. And I'll get that done hopefully in the weekend, and um, send it on every So, that's kind of where that is. And uh, I don't think we're leaving until September, I think, cause they all gone recess and so, so But we'll uh, you can run that down, but I think everything else that we had, um, I think everything's kind of been taken, there's any big issues on the state and being
Where are we gonna get the retribution in here to chat with us, since we're all on the same page regarding funding and
Um, well, they were at that meeting, yeah, that was just one, we really, um, I don't know, we probably need to have um, schedule a meeting with them uh, at a future date that's going to Consider the other one, it's kind of, yeah, and, and I don't know enough about them, Biden's recommit, but what I'm kind of figuring out here, is that it would say it's a lie. And there aren't, there's no consistent, you know, membership there, cause it changes as kids move through the system, which is not unusual. You know, it's kind of expected, you know?
Um, I, I can't speak to the recent one, but I know the past, it was pretty solid for a while, quite a while. I don't know who else would run there.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, it isn't like
Then I guess from basketball and softball, and everything came into the recommission, your recommit's purview, people have come and gone, depending on
Yeah, but it even sounds like talking to that, what's his name, Will?
The guy who played in
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like that, you know, soccer has become the big thing, and maybe uh for us, so I'm not even clear that the field's being used beyond, you know, a practice field, it sound like, so Yeah, I think a discussion with, you know, who's doing it, cause it's something they using Babe Ruth out of um, uh Gosdoun, you know, in other towns to do our recreation, so Yeah, it just seemed a little odd to me, so yeah.
Oh.
And of course, the uh, the porta potty down there is a, is a question.
Yeah.
Cause it sounds like that's just a uh, very limited availability, I think that needs to be looked at.
Absolutely. But I know, it was my concern when they were talking, and showing regarding switching from Gosdoun to both school districts, regarding the sports programs and such, and I think that's where we're at now, is the follow-up, because
Yeah.
Some are going Gosdoun, some are going to Bow.
Yeah.
Where they all actually fall.
Yeah, so the use of that field is sort of, or any of the facility we have, it's kind of a question of who's doing what, if anybody.
We look, I guess, we all know where we're going with the recommit on
Yeah. Yep.
Is we gonna tie our wagons to the Gosdoun horse or the Bow horse?
Yeah, but then what happens to the facility?
Well, that's funny, we might get more use of bringing Bow versus Gosdoun at this point in time.
Right. Yeah.
And then they just phase out, those are grandfather, they go to Gosdoun, the grandfather goes, whoever else starts going there, I don't know.
And I know there was discussion earlier around building bleachers, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know if that ever happened, or what they did then.
I thought they were gonna buy the one.
Don't know.
All good questions for one of the people.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I think it's a good idea. To have them
Put on my list for It's gonna be good.
Yep.
Any thoughts on our work here? I don't know, throw that to fire. All right, last is the RFP.
Is this the latest one?
Um, I think
Is this the oldest? Um, yeah, it is, yeah. Yeah. There will be, yes.
I guess the question
That is the most recent one, that's around
We only have one drop to this right here, this way.
What is that?
The RFP for the roof. Exes questions, I think, wait, look at that.
I looked at, uh, there was something came in, and they, that just handed out to us, and I marked it up, but it did a couple of questions. Um, I think it's a something, I think it's a
I mean, cause we can make a copy for it, but
Yeah, I had, um, well, the one I have, Brian, is dated, uh I wrote May fifteen, I'm not sure when this, this was the one that I think Lean stuck in the bucket, so
This one's the, this one
Yeah, she gave this to us last week, this is the one with all the red out on it?
Um, this, well, what's the date on this? Look on the second page, it's on the bottom.
On page two?
Yeah, so the RFP, roof library draft, it has a date.
No, it's just a dash one.
Okay, well, she's put, on this one, I have the date, so this must be the most recent one.
May twenty eighth is with this one, bottom of the page.
This is July first.
Okay, I don't have that one.
So Country Central's electronic.
Yeah, I didn't get any, I don't have, I, I, that's why I wasn't sure I'm getting all the email, I should be getting
Hold on, if you haven't had a chance to look at the most recent one, I don't know if it's worth
Right, but I do have a question, though, maybe, maybe these are on that one too, if you go to the RFP itself
Yep.
These, these are just probably picking on things, but on page five, under description of work
Uh-huh.
I had a question on, oh, it references shingles quite often in here.
Well, she does completely change on this one.
So, what does it say there?
Um, general slate roof installation specifications.
Alright, and, so we've decided we're going with slate?
Well, we know there's no shingles far as
No, I know, that's why, that's why
Well, asphalt shingles, so we
Yeah.
Could be a shingle, like a metal shingle.
Well, my um, my, my thought there was that it say roofing determine, because we haven't determined what it's going to be.
Right.
But she said that she was on the way to our
Well, she asked if this
Yeah, I thought they worked for metal, yeah, right, one for metal, one for Because some people might did it just for metal, and some
I think, yeah, personally, they would just keep it as one, and then you give them option, here's exhibit A, exhibit B.
Right, one RFP, but we're saying, that's what Oh, with two different attachments.
Exactly, if they leave one blank, that, that means they're not bidding on that particular
Right.
material, they bid on, you know, they can bid on both, or they can bid on one.
That's right.
Right, I mean, that's just my two cents.
So, what do they
Yes, but that's what she's saying was getting long.
Right.
So
So, that's why, I was just looking through this thing here, I just made notes on that, and then, um, you know, maybe it should just say roofing materials, and then the exhibits, wood, you know, one for a metal, one for a slate, maybe. And then the other thing, I was wondering about the fasteners, so then the last time we talked, Bob brought it up, about the fasteners, you know, making sure that the correct fastener. And when we asked them, samples of the material, should we also be looking at what they're gonna be using?
As you know, fasteners as well.
Yeah.
Full fastener. Absolutely, yeah. That's what I said.
Yeah, cause I know this one here, where I was looking, it kind of specifies the fasteners to be nail, and it gave kind of the detail, on what the nail was supposed to look like, and the color of it, and the length of it, and corrosion resistant, I think, well, what if they don't use nails, I don't know what they use to fasten, you know, slate, I have no idea.
Copper and stainless steel.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so this is calling out, you know, that's why I say, you know, maybe we need to go more specific on, you know, that kind of thing, but I mean
I mean, they could take and supply one with the other.
But I
Well, and that's why, then, if you were reading those two examples I gave you It says to request the specifications, as in the specifications, and you'll find in that grant, that slate manufacturers, it specifies
What kind of
Non-corrosive stainless steel or copper fasteners, so you would get that, and you would know what they would have to use right away.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have the latest and greatest one here, so I'm a bit of this
Uh, well, and I'll make sure that you get it sent to you, or you want a hard copy?
I, no, I'd like the electronic, it's fine.
So, can we take this one till next week?
Yep, you can, yeah.
You know, to, to get yours
Cause in the attachment in the back here, it does say metal and slate, but the thing is, it, you know, I don't, I paid out the right
Yeah, but the thickness, that's our thickness of our new one.
stuff, and I didn't get it either. Yeah, that's nice, that's awesome. That's why I know, I expected to see this in an email, Brian, but I
Yeah, you can't even, I wanna say like a great portion on vacation. You want a hard copy, or you wanna, I do care.
Hard copy, if you can through him, then I can Electronic, yeah.
Going like a hat.
He's a whole prick, actually.
Yeah.
Well, just believe we didn't hear, so if you want to
Yeah.
So
Yeah, the reason I'm suspicious on the email, I haven't really, I haven't had anything against, against my own, and um, I think, it's not a lot, I don't think anybody has, you know, I looked on it today
I haven't sent any emails. Only have you sent any email.
I have. I've sent email, I've sent, on my, my new one, the T O D one, yeah.
You guys get on the, the shared, what does that share select, when you guys get in that one too?
Uh, I don't think I'm getting those.
That's probably why you did that, because
Oh, maybe, yeah. You know what, I'll have, next week, I'll call Lean, I'll have her send me a test one, through the shared selection thing, you know, I don't think I'm getting I want you to take this, hey.
He's paying, he's paying the bill, so he doesn't get them, huh?
Right, yeah. Yeah, uh, maybe that's the problem, Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I know she sent me a lot of stuff on the shared select
Oh, she's in, yeah, and it's, yeah, then I'm not connected somehow.
Well, when I go back from time, I'll check in for you, a bunch of them, you know, last few weeks or whatever.
Yeah. I was suspicious earlier today, when I, cause I haven't logged on in a week, so when I logged on today, there was nothing, I said, hmm.
Sounds like, yeah. All right, the house gets empty, gentlemen.
Okay.
Good?
Cool.
Anything for the order?
I do, um, we, we still got the issue of the um trustees for the uh
Only
Town Hall Theater um committee. We, we seem to have a, something left wide open there. The only, um, the documentation that's been provided through Lean and Linda, um, Peter's, I wish, cause it's only ever been one trustee, and that would be uh Clem Madden, and that expired in um twenty fourteen Twenty fourteen, I think, so I don't think they have any trustees that the um select board is supposed to assign. And it's been re-assigned, I mean, that's why, I think they have, um, I don't know, haven't come out.
I mean, you guys can sit blindly, pretend like I'm not here, you can ask me directly if you do know something.
Do you know if there's any trustees?
Yes, our meetings are posted on the town website.
I know that, but there's no documentation travels, that's what we're looking for.
We haven't been looking for.
Well, Ted was a sworn trustee, so we know there's more than, than uh Ted, did you raise your hand and take an oath? You did.
I did, I imagine.
Yeah, you did, I did too, the, I don't know, I think Linda probably just didn't have time to look and do it for you, it'd be my guess. I saw some email back and forth between the two of you, but um, yeah, the, 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 business has not changed, I mean, other than the fact that you have chosen not to recognize this, I mean, nothing else is different.
I don't know, has somebody can show us proof that, that the, that there's trustees in the other
I'm sure if you look with the state registry, because we're a private corporation now, we're a nonprofit, you can find an updated copy of our bylaws, and that would, that would list, what, what is the date on
Yep.
Cause we updated them in May of this year.
These are not due to trust.
Yeah, so, um, you can go right to the state website.
Oh, uh, April, I'm sorry, May twenty five, twenty eleven.
Yeah, okay, so those are, yeah, we, we updated them in May twenty fifteen.
Well, the um, the document that's really in question is this one here.
Yeah.
It's this one here that was filed with the State of New Hampshire Corporation. Yeah, and um If this is for the Articles of Agreement for New Hampshire Nonprofit Corporation, and, and in here, it states that um The selectmen will appoint trustees, and that's what I was looking for, was to find proof of that, that it had happened, and that trustees were sworn in.
We were sworn in by Linda.
Okay, well, she's been unable to show any proof of that, and what were the terms of those, whether one year, was it three year?
Um, everybody on the town committee gets reappointed yearly.
Uh, reappointed yearly, so that would mean they have to get sworn in every year.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
So
We have been. I mean, not now, but I mean, when we were a town committee, we were
If you keep this going, you need to do that, that's why I was getting that, is this.
Um Again, I think if you check with the state registry, that could, what is that dated, it's probably
Well, this is a recent one, this is one I pulled off from it too long ago. Um, I don't know if the date is on this document, this is filed
Okay, we're
This is the one that was on the webpage, that's all I can tell you, trust.
Yeah, we're meeting August twenty sixth, you guys are really welcome to come to the meeting, if you have specific questions, but if you want the group to come to answer, if you guys could just specifically send to us what you want to know before we come.
I think you know interested in it as well, I mean, it's regarding
Yeah, it's this, it's, this is the only thing that's, that's of concern, is it
Yeah. What, what, what's the bigger picture, what is the exact concern, Tom?
Selectment No, the selectmen need to appoint trustees, that's all I wanna do, is make sure that
To the nonprofit?
Yeah, I mean, that's what this, that's what this document says, that's, there's no argument about anything, I want, I just want to do what this document says.
They're not, we can't find it in the minutes.
No, 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 I'm not saying the argument, I'm just saying, is there a bigger picture, cause it just wasn't, cause they said that, you know, we updated our bylaws, so
Beyond that, no.
I mean, we wrote, we wrote those bylaws.
Just to do this, is this to make sure the selectmen have appointed trustees, and it's documented. If somebody can show documentation, then I'll say, okay, the only one that was produced was one for Clem Madden, it's the only one that's been produced, and it says he, the selectmen needed to do it, so, we need to do it, cause
Cause it's not even the selectmen, man, so we can't find where it has anybody that's been appointed as a trustee
Yeah.
For the five oh one C, they've been appointed to the committee as a town committee, and the two separate entities.
Yeah, not the same time.
So, we just wanna make sure we're following everything
Doesn't it say, you know, that there's supposed to be a selectmen's draft too?
Yep.
Well, that's in your bylaws.
That's kind of concern, I was
Well Bylaws aren't the same as this.
That's the Articles of the Corporation.
Right, this is the Articles of the Corporation.
Right, like I said, we, we, um, to save you guys some love work, the uh, in May, we revised our bylaws, cause we wrote them, um, which changed that status, actually, the selectmen will want to appoint trustees to the committee, we picked them and appointed them.
Yeah, we need to see proof of that.
Um Like I said, go on the state website, we're a nonprofit, we don't have to answer to the town in any way.
No, I understand, but this
Um, but go to the state website, have Lean do it, your administrator, and, and she can print out the latest copy of the bylaws, that way, you guys are updated and you know what's going on.
Yeah.
Other than that, come to our meeting on the twenty sixth.
Okay.
I mean, well, it's the legality aspect, because before you change your bylaws, you have to be appointed by the selectmen, if you guys weren't appointed, then hence, there are no trustees, so there's no way they can change the bylaws.
You have a man sitting in between you and Tom that knows one hundred percent for sure he was sworn in trustee.
Yep.
Now, whether or not, I mean, whereas yours, we aren't sworn in paperwork for a selectmen.
That should be in file.
Should be, hopefully, that is filed.
Should be, right, just as I should be, we're assuming.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if it comes down to, I'm sure Linda will find the paperwork, because there's been, what, seven years, so there should be at least four dozen appointed people.
Yeah, they're dealing Yeah.
Yeah, so
Well, we just wanna make sure
I know that she said that she didn't have time to work on it, so I can contact the person.
Look, the eyes are dotted with a T S cross, so it doesn't come back by any of us in the, in the rear.
Right.
I think you're all set.
I don't
I have proof. Exactly, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. No disrespect, but just because someone says, well, I think you're all set, that doesn't mean we're fuzzy, so I wanna make sure we're all set.
Yeah.
That's, that's our job here, as you know.
What, how would it affect you or impact you in any way, like I said, you just, you disbanded the committee, and by, and by doing that
You just
Well, disbanding a committee and disbanning a four, five oh one is not the same thing, and, and I'm
Yeah. Well, you didn't disband the five oh one.
No, I didn't, that's what I'm saying.
Right. But it may not be legitimate.
But it may not be legit at the moment, if you don't have your sworn in trustees appointed by selectmen, that's what this document says. I didn't create this document, this is a document
Oh, no, 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 I know, but I'm, I'm telling you that I was sworn in every year, I mean
Okay, that's great, but now, well, we can show proof beyond that, trust.
I mean, if you're gonna nitpick with that, I would suggest doing it to all the committees in town. Just so you know, I mean, you, you, you know, be careful when you're touching Pandora's box.
No, this, this one, this, this document says the selectmen need to appoint trustees.
Mm-hmm. What's that? All the nonprofits in town, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean
But not all the nonprofits, say the selectmen are appointing trustees.
I feel the guards one doesn't say that.
No, they don't.
I don't understand why you guys are picking at it, but to make you happy, we will make sure that we get you the appointment paperwork from
Yeah, that's all we're asking.
To that, well, you can, you have a town clerk to get it from her.
She doesn't have it, she hasn't been able to produce a trust, she sent me an email that said she couldn't find it.
Yeah, what's
Okay, and what perpetrated this, what was the piece of paperwork that came across?
This, I was cleaning my files out, and came across this, and I started, I, you know, just wondered, where are these trustees that we're supposed to be appointing?
So, if you don't officially have paperwork for every single trustee for seven years is in the shoes, that's what you're saying?
I don't care about the past seven, I care about the future. Now, the past seven, they should be there, nothing I can do about if they're not, but I only care about what's going forward, I can't change the past.
So, we're just trying to make sure we do our job, so you guys can do your job legally, so get us five names and make them present. So, can we assume you're gonna be the spokesperson for the board, for your
I, I'm one of the directors for the nonprofit, I, I'm not the president, Tiffany Dodd's the president, so, um, I only came here because I wasn't here in the meeting when you decided not to continue with the committee, and um, I got forward emails coming between you and, and Linda, so, I just, in case you have questions, so Our, our new bylaws are on the state, they're, they're registered, they're concealed, they're localized, and um, as far as the appointment paperwork, we, I don't keep copies of when I've been appointed to anything, so
Okay.
We don't get copies, no.
I think the secretary Secretary, the five oh one C three, secretary should keep copies of that stuff.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't have copies
The town clerk business applies for copies, just the selectmen.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the distribution, as if there is one.
I don't know either. Hmm, anything else?
Nope.
Sound good. All right, I guess we're gonna pay our chief, do you have anything for the, for the order?
Uh, just wanted to let you know that Laura Catagre is um physical, psychologically, and everything's fine, and we'll be looking to appoint her any next meeting. Uh, just wanted to let you know that Laura Catagre is, um, physical, psychological, I mean, everything's fine, we'll be looking to appoint her in the next meeting, just wanted to give you the heads up on that.
Great, thank you. Is she gonna come in for that appointment, like any other person that gets hired or?
That's the plan, we'd like to bring her in, um, we'll, you know, just make sure that all the documentation begins taking care of, in front of the, you know, that it's not. Um, you know, maybe if we can do it totally on it.
Yep.
You know, take the crowd, maybe the crowd out.
Right. Oh, yeah, there's, uh, you know, but, congoordinating with Lean says you throw it on the agenda and we, you know, make it happen, absolutely, that'd be great. Awesome, anything else?
That's about it.
Woody?
Yeah, can you do me a favor and put on your little note there that, uh, I've been trying to get a personnel plans for several months now, at, at least two months. And I keep getting told we're gonna get it, I'm not trying to throw Lean under the bus, I guess, I hired two employees, and I don't have paperwork for them, I got some paperwork. But maybe in the future, we can come up with a packet and hand them in due.
I'm sure she's been working on that.
I mean, it's, it's been a while waiting for personnel plans.
Has it been updated since two thousand fourteen, or thirteen?
I don't think so.
Because I uploaded it on the website, the town website then.
Um, there's been some minor changes with, you know, removing the, um, salary matrix and stuff like that, it's a separate attachment, so it's not part of this.
Yeah. Yeah. It should be on the website, I think.
Yeah, I don't want to print it off my computer.
Okay, alright, well, I'll just let you know.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm still using my computer without and stuff, and I'm getting a little tired of that, but I know what, someday it might be in the works.
So, so you're saying you hired a couple of guys.
I don't have personnel plans for.
And you're right, they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be given a personnel policy when you hire.
Yeah, I asked for the paperwork, I went to my superior and I've asked for the paperwork and I keep getting.
You asked for a personnel plan?
Yes, I had.
It was in the office, I thought.
Just said there's none in the file and I had to make some more. When I asked, I, I religiously ask every week, because I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus, I just need to get some paperwork to my, my employees and I asked. I asked Matt back last week and said it would be a good job for, uh, Joel Marie, so this week, but still, there's nothing.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Can you call us tomorrow? And I have to gonna make ten copies? Alright, so.
Right on. You're home tomorrow too, aren't you?
You'll have copies made tomorrow, Monday, you can come in and get some.
Anything else, oh, that's, is it, don't know.
Nope, I'm just here.
Well.
I'd have a criticism, but I'd be wasting my breath, so I don't have, I don't have anything to say.
Travis, anything extra?
No, I don't think so.
Alrighty. Um, we're gonna go into non-public, based on, I'm gonna read, make sure I get the right number here. Uh, RSA ninety one dash A colon three, um. I think it would be A, it was A. So, we're gonna do that, and so we're not gonna point on any of the, I don't know, after what's happened.
Play them.
We can do that, yeah. Maybe we should, or non-public.
Maybe we should go on public.
You or me? I'm ready.
You did.
Yes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Control is in favor, value is, uh.
Like this, that was A.
Play of order?
Yep.
Is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
No, not till they come back out of non-public, that's when, that's when we adjourn.
The regular meeting?
Yes, because you're doing the, you gotta go in non-public during the regular meeting, then you come out, and then you go to, then adjourn the official public meeting.
Okay.
But we're not gonna have any business afterwards.
Okay.
So if you're welcome to stay and just to have us say we're adjourned.
Say goodnight.
Nope, that's okay. Recycles that.